I can't hear you, Steve.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner King?
Yes.
All right, Commissioner Naylitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
And Commissioner Waters?
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen. The agenda has been adopted. Now we have two consent agendas, I mean, well, a consent agenda, but there were two meeting minutes we're going to be approving. I'll do both separately, so there's no confusion. So, a motion to accept the consent agenda with meeting minutes of the 10:12, 2020. Mike has moved. Do I have a second? I have a second from the Waters. All right, now we'll do the vote. Commissioner King? Commissioner Waters?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Martin?
Yes.
And Commissioner Naylitz?
Yes.
And for the special meeting minutes of 10:19, 2020, do I have a motion to accept those? Okay, got a motion from Commissioner King, second from Mr. Waters, and now we'll call it again. Commissioner Waters?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Naylitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yeah.
All right, with that said, next up is our public comment hearing. We've got about eight people that are going to speak. One is online, Charlie, I see you're there. So Charlie, we're going to save you for last, and you get the final word, sir. So we're going to start right now with the public comments, and if you would, I'd have any true acts in mind, and we'll come right up.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I thought that I was online to speak for the public hearing, some component, down at number seven.
Okay, I had you for, hang on just a second. Okay, so we'll save yours for item number seven.
Thanks, sir.
I had you on the regular sign unless... Okay, all right, I see these notes. Hang on just a second, okay, because we're going to do regular, then you'll be right back up in just a second. Okay, so you've got one, two, all right, so Jimmy? Asking why I am there, because some of this may not be, if they're not related to the, oh, here, there are two separate sheets. Okay, here's one we're all about, so Susan Hall, have her come in and then back. Sorry for the confusion, we had two sheets. I don't have my glasses. Hello, Susan, come on in, just stand right there, and give you your 30 minutes of time.
Okay, are we ready?
Yes, please, right here.
Okay, first of all, can everybody hear me? Everybody out there online, somebody told me to make sure everybody could hear me.
We can hear you.
Thank you. Okay, so, do I need to keep this on?
No, if you feel comfortable, let's move on.
Okay, thanks. I believe there's a need in Cape Carteret for a neighborhood advisory committee. The Neighborhood Advisory Committee will act as a bridge between neighborhoods, homeowners' associations, and local government to discuss common concerns and advocate for collective solutions. The Neighborhood Advisory Committee would be a committee of volunteer representatives from Cape Carteret neighborhoods who routinely communicate information and raise awareness of issues with the Board of Commissioners, town staff, and their own neighborhood residents. The NAC efforts are intended to lead to solutions that result in continuous improvement in the quality of life for all our neighborhoods. The committee should consist of members with representation from each specific community sector or neighborhood. It should advise on neighborhoods within the Cape Carteret zoning and planning jurisdiction only. Responsibilities of the Cape Carteret Neighborhood Advisory Committee would be, one, to bring important concerns from neighborhoods to the Board of Commissioners and town staff for resolution; two, to host regular speakers at meetings to inform the committee on timely, relevant issues; three, to share information across neighborhoods; four, to provide two-way communication with residents and neighborhoods and collect feedback to the degree possible; five, collaborate with other town organizations when possible; six, offer informed advice and recommendations to the Board of Commissioners as requested. The committee shall have the following powers and duties: one, develop rules and bylaws for the conduct of its business, including but not limited to meeting schedules, officers, voting, and subcommittees; two, develop a plan to strengthen neighborhood identity and resilience and to facilitate communication and cooperation between Cape Carteret neighborhoods and town government; three, develop benchmarks and standards by which progress towards implementing the plan can be measured; and four, work on special projects that are consistent with the goals of the committee as assigned and directed by the Board of Commissioners. And I'm asking the Board of Commissioners to please support me on this issue. Thank you.
Next is Ms. Holes. Hello, Ms. Holes.
Thank you, Mayor Baker. Thank you, Commissioners. Thanks for letting me speak. I'll be real quick. Not sure if you've heard yet, but the county received the major cammer permit for the dredge work on the Old Ferry Channel and Deer Creek Friday. My brother John and I are providing them with free spoil sites. I don't want the mess, but I'll take it for the good of the project, hoping to make it cheaper for everybody. So, that's in the works. They're going to brief would-be contractors tomorrow in the courthouse. They hope to receive the bids soon and get underway. Now, the reason I mention that is, last month I asked for the no-wake zone buoys to be placed. I will understand if the town would like to wait until this dredging is done, makes sense, but I still have volunteers, including my son Max Pontoonboat and Reggie Ruth, who say they'll help place those buoys at the appropriate time. What Reggie needs to know is how much they weigh and how they're going to be anchored and so forth. Number two, the easement across number three of the lakes. I am a little concerned that the route shown by the engineer seems to go between lots 16 and 17 block C of Star Hill. There is no recorded easement there that I've been able to find, no easement whatsoever. So if the town is planning to use that as a ditch, it would be a great idea to get an easement. The easement shown on the recorded map of Section A, Star Hill Revised, is nowhere near the location of the proposed stormwater plan. Likewise, I've asked the professional staff at Star Hill to look at what was sent to us, which I don't entirely understand, and see what they want to do. And they said, "We'd rather wait and see what the town wants to do, and then we'll react." So maybe we need to have a meeting between our green superintendent, our general manager, Zach Steffi, maybe the engineer. We've pledged to cooperate, I've pledged to take the engineered plan to the board as soon as we get our hands on it. So, one thing we will require, Star Hill will require proof, proof that there are no water-to-air heat pumps in that stretch of residences dumping three gallons per minute, per ton of air conditioning onto the ground without it going back either into a well or a closed system. Because neither the town nor Star Hill should be required to dispose of other people's water-to-air heat pump water, in my opinion. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Holes. All right, that's it for the regular. Well, as soon as we get the next, we'll bring those in, get to that section. So that's it for the regular public comments. Next up is the staff updates, Zach. Just going to move this here a little closer, because y'all should think they all look pretty easy.
All right, can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
Yes, what is it?
All righty. Get this full screen. Just a couple things want to run through today. We have the Cape Carteret House Decorating Contest, which is right around the corner. We've got a couple different categories, best traditional light, best coastal theme, best creative design, best overall design, and the Citizens Choice Award. If you're interested in signing up, there's the link to access the online signup form. You can also email Heather for additional information. The submission deadline is by 5:00 p.m. on December 11th, 2020, and judging is on December 11th and December 12th, depending on how many entries we get. It's also that time of year again, it's No Shave November, so it's a fundraiser for local charities, and this year the Cape Carteret Police Department has set the goal of raising $1,000 for misplaced mucks. If you'd like more information, contact the Cape Carteret Police Department. I can reach out to Chief McKinney at policedepartment@capecarteret.org. And I want to recognize John Ritchie, who made a donation earlier today, I believe $200 towards the objective, so I just want to thank him for his donation and encourage anybody else who's interested in donating to support the cause, to get up with the police department and help support this great cause. The next yard debris pickup is going to be on December 4th, 5th, and 6th. The earliest that debris can be put out in the right of way is November 24th. All debris should be curbside by sunset on December 3rd to ensure that it is picked up. You might see, over the next couple weekends, the Pub Works Department will be out practicing with a knuckle boom truck. They're just out there practicing and learning how to use it. They'll be going for their CDL tests in the near future, hopefully, so trying to get acclimated with the truck and the controls, but just want to remind everybody to wait off on putting any debris out there until November 24th, because we do have the regularly scheduled pickup that's right around the corner, so just want to remind everybody of that. Here at Town Hall, we also have a program going on, which is Home for the Holidays. This is helping the Carteret County Animal Shelter and Humane Society, trying to get some cats and dogs adopted this holiday season. So this week we've got Chase, which is an 11-month-old hound mix, and Alyssa, which is a year-and-a-half-old cat that's up there at the shelter. So if you're looking for a pet this holiday season and are interested in adopting, definitely check out their website at cchs-shelter.com, or give them a call up there. So definitely, if you can share it on your social media pages and get the word out there, we're trying to find homes for these pets this holiday season. We had our first drive-in movie-in-the-park event, which was Ghostbusters, so had a good turnout, everybody really had a great time. So it was a little bit dicey down there till the end, it was pretty windy on that day, but it worked out perfectly that as soon as the movie was about to start, the wind dropped off and we were able to enjoy the movie. So we're looking at doing Elf in the month of December as a drive-in movie in the park, and we should have more information on that to come soon. We also started doing a Connect with Cape Carteret series, so here's the screenshot from the November 2020 edition of that. It goes out via the Constant Contact email, posted on the town Facebook, Instagram, and YouTube page, so definitely encourage everybody to check that out. Got a lot of good valuable information in there about what's going on in the town, and a lot of that information that I just mentioned in the update today, so that's something that'll be going out at the beginning of each month. So really pleased with the feedback we've gotten on that so far. And just to point out, you know, we're still seeing some activity in the tropics, have Tropical Storm Ada that's there in the Gulf, and then two other areas for development that we're watching as well, that one that's south of Cuba. Looking at Ada, there's potential it might be kind of drifting this way, although it's moving pretty slowly, so definitely something to keep an eye on, that we're monitoring closely. Town Hall will be closed for Veterans Day on November 11th, and will be closed for Thanksgiving on November 26th and November 27th. And also want to say that Barbara Owens is our new administrative assistant, and today was her first day, so we want to welcome her to the town, and excited that she's joining us, and look forward to the community getting to know her. So that's everything I have for this evening. I'll turn it back over to Mayor Baker.
All right, thanks, sir. Chief, guys, then you want to pass?
He's covered it all.
Covered it all, that's right. Good deal. All right, next up is the public hearing regarding seller finance group. And so I assume we need to have a motion to go into that.
Motion. Second.
Second, Commissioner King, all right, we'll call it. Y'all hear me? Okay, Zach?
What's the motion, Mayor? What's the motion, Mayor?
Just to go to the public hearing regarding the seller finance group. I have a motion by Commissioner Waters and the second, our Commissioner King. Now we'll roll call, we'll start with you, Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner Naylitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
And Commissioner Waters?
Yes.
All right, we are now in the public comment section, and we will go right now on this list, let me move to the speaker. Got that, thanks. All right, first up is me, and then Wayne. Yes, you can.
Hey, how y'all doing? Mike, your hair has gotten whiter. Hi, y'all. I'm here to represent the, well, Bay Shore community, and, you know, we got a lot of professional people there, and hard-working people. And not just Bay Shore, I'm here for the whole town of Cape Carteret. I know that y'all looking into doing owner financing, and I know during our days, my days here as commissioner and mayor, there was a lot of money that we didn't have to provide for things to be done, and I just think this is not the proper time or right time. We do have a lot of waterfront property, we got a lot of parks, we got, Mr. King, is it 13 parks we have?
Sorry.
How many parks do we have for the town? But we all have waterfront parks here that, you know, we may be able to expand. Eight, nine of them. And also, if we're going to do any owner financing, I think it would be nice to do owner financing, to make a play park over on Bahida, for land that's been sitting there for 10 years, and apparently we cannot sell it. And that's my main reason for being here. And I know y'all going to talk about owner financing. We don't have a bond rating in this town, which we couldn't borrow, we were going to borrow money for a backhoe to build up our bond rating, which that didn't occur, so I don't think we should be out trying to owner-finance land for a boat ramp. And if you really have looked at it, the right of way, if you take the right of way away from the land there, you can't even park a truck and a trailer. And the seawall, and we also have about 28 pilings at the end of the road that'll have to be removed. You'll have to get your marine map that are broken off at the water level. So here, I'm here as an ex-commissioner and a resident, and it is, my home is right in front of it. I'm for the town to have waterfront property, but like I said, we've got waterfront property with all our parks we got, that we can take and maybe widen them. We got places we can make a boat launch, but maybe not park in, and are leased with Paxton's till 2031, am I correct on that? The lease agreement on the boat ramp? So, that's still 10 years off. And it's also a beautiful residential lot, and you can put a house on it. Okay? Thank you. Y'all take care. Mr. T?
Yes, sir.
I'm the best there, okay?
Good evening, gentlemen. Appreciate you giving us some time. Okay, Mr. Mayor, Board of Commissioners, and Town Manager, I'm assuming Zach's listening to this, thank you again for this opportunity to speak. First time I addressed you all was in September, shortly after I and several neighbors learned about this proposed property purchase. This came to our attention not by any of you or any official notification, which out of general courtesy would have been a prudent thing to do, just, we just known, I mean, the way we found out was. First time I spoke, I noted the various issues facing the town, the town's inability, over the years, to preserve and maintain properties and infrastructure. The second time I spoke was in October, at which, at that meeting, I read the petition that had been developed by neighbors and adjoining property owners, and was at that time being circulated. At the direction of the mayor, I left a copy of the petition on the podium. Over two weeks later, the town clerk contacted me wanting a copy of the petition to go with the minutes. Apparently the copy I left was either misplaced or discarded. I appeared here tonight with the original petition signed by 140 residents. I have town residents here, but I've just been informed that we might actually have had somebody from Hunting Bay sign it, so I apologize for that. We tried to restrict it to just town residents. I'm going to leave the petition here again, on the podium with all the signatures, unless you...
I'll make sure I have the copies.
Yes, okay, well, I made copies and dropped them all off today. But this is, this will be the original. In addition, I said, well, I've already told you that a copy's been left with the, each commissioner, the mayor, and the town manager. I hope that you'll take the time to read petition and signatures, which obviously at least one commissioner did, because he sent me a text message indicating that it was somebody from Hunting Bay, God forbid that it's actually signed. I'm sure it was over the boat ramp, and it probably a member of the boat ramp. Now I'd like to address the misinformation published in the local media. The property owner is quoted in the article saying in part that he had offered the land for sale to the adjoining property owners, and even mentioned he recommended us forming a consortium. This is untrue. I, myself, and other property owners have, over the years, attempted to speak with the property owner with negative results. And on at least one occasion, my next-door neighbor was told by the property owner that the property wanted for sale. He was correct that two days after we found out about the town having an agreement to purchase it, an attempt was made to contact regarding purchase of the property at that time, at which time he confirmed that he had an agreement with the town. The second piece of misinformation written in the news article was that the town does not own waterfront property, but rather leases land at the end of numerous streets facing Bog Sound. Again, this is untrue. The town, as I understand it, was steeded the land these parks many years ago, and in addition has two peers. The only leased land is the current boat ramp. I recall one current commissioner indicating that he would rather have the funding of the CC Trail put into a referendum than have five commissioners decide. I believe the same holds true for this. I thank you again for your time and attention, this is a very important issue facing not only the residents of Bay Shore, but the entire Cape Carteret community. And here's the original petition with the original signatures. Leave it here, bring it... Okay, okay. Thank you for your time, gentlemen.
Jimmy Lawrence? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
We'll just change the voting and go through this.
Okay, my name's Jimmy Lawrence, I live on Bog Sound Drive in Bay Shore Park. I'm a member of the Bay Shore Nine Boat Ramp Group, the LLC, and we are opposed to the town purchasing the property in the Lejeune for a kayak boat ramp park. We don't, we feel the property is not large enough to support the traffic that it would create. The seawall on Lejeune is in need of repair, and it will cost the town tens of thousands of dollars to replace it and maintain it. The town already has a pier at the end of Bay Shore, and it has shallow water that is good and adequate for launching a kayak that the town already owns right now, and it's existing. Okay, as a member, as a member of the Bay Shore Nine, we've had people on our property come over there and park without being a member, and they do not, they're not paid members. And we've also got signs on our dock that say no trespassing, we get people on our docks all the time, and we just feel like it's going to create more of a burden on us when you get more traffic generated down there. That's what's going to create more issues for us. Last thing I got to say is the roads in Bay Shore are in need of repair. We had a road that was washed out on our road in Bog Sound, it took over three months to repair it, and the ditches need to be maintained and dug out properly, so when we have inches, when we have three or four inches of rain, at a time, the water's not standing in the road. So we feel like there's other ways the town could spend the money than purchasing the ramp that would be better, suit the needs of people in town. And that's it. Thanks, thank you, sir. Thank you for your time.
Next is Marvin Miller. Zach, I'm on Zach's hearing, but our screen is showing that we need to use something with the lights lighter than I did. Check our screen, make sure we're still good.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
My name is Marvin Miller. My wife is Glenda outside, and of course, we live at 131 Lejeune. And we're here probably for why everybody else is here, for some reason or other. Our main concern was, we were in contact with Dennis on this property, and he said that it was for sale, but then he came along and said that, "Well, I can't sell to you, because I'm selling it to the town." And then we got a, he showed me a proposal of what is possibly going to be, and, which was laid out boat launching ramp, picnic area out towards my end of the parcel. And I became kind of annoyed about that, because I said, first I thought somebody's going to buy it and build a house. So anyway, I live in there, we get a really pretty good view of everything that's going around us, and a neighbor across the waterway of this on the canal side there has run into a lot of problems with the city or the town park area there. And at night, and he's only there on certain weekends, and we see people driving in his property, going out, and before he put a gate on his dock, carrying coolers out, and kids jumping off of the dock and everything. And so he said, so he's seen this, he goes, he put cameras up, and so he put a gate on, but they still go out. I mean, not all the time, I'm not saying that, but occasionally we'll see lights flash around, I'll say, "Christ, another guy drove up there." And the other thing is, he comes down, and there's times he can't get into his driveway because it's parked full. So putting that into what we visualize would happen on this end, I think, "Oh, my God. We thought we had paradise here, and it looks like it's going to turn into a piece of crap," you know, because unfortunately, in our world, people don't have the respect that you think they should have. And it's too bad that it is that way. And so, of course, for that reason, and I think that, like some of the neighbors, I think they also would have a problem if it's going to be a boat launching ramp, because it's going to be congestion and everything else. So I said my part, and I appreciate you hearing from me, and have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Appreciate your comments.
Okay. How you doing?
Kurt Schawster.
Good evening, sir. Evening. Thanks for letting us come out and voice our concerns and everything. My name's Kurt Schaefer.
I'm sorry.
It's okay, Kurt Schaefer. Full-time resident, Cape Carteret, lived at 306 Lejeune Road. In May, it's gonna be 12 years. We live there full-time, 12 years now. Seen a few changes, most of them good, a lot more full-time residents right there. We've got that boat ramp directly across from our house. So, whenever I open our front door, there's the boat ramp. We're concerned, we don't have to need another, another boat ramp in our small community. It's gonna increase the traffic quite a bit, especially in the, it's strictly residential I'm concerned about, of course, the traffic and that we were never, one time, contacted about, from the town, about any of this, of being a possibility that the town is gonna buy the piece of property for a park or a boat ramp or anything like that. We're no different than anybody else. We all are concerned about our neighbors. We were always concerned about that piece of property right in front of our house. We never knew what was gonna happen with it and we never had a chance to buy it, frankly. But we really would like the chance or be notified if someone is gonna buy it before it actually happens. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate your comments. Vaughn Branch. Say one more time. Vaughn Branch.
Be nice to us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. This is...
Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
Just come on in.
All right. I'm just gonna read this because I've only read it once, it's typed it up. "Good evening. My name is Vaughn Branch and I live at 225 Bayshore Drive and I have for the last 27 years. That's in addition to enjoying my family's vacation spot at 301 Lejeune Road, which is adjacent to the property of the proposed boat ramp started around 1980. So, I've been very familiar with the proposed boat ramp property for many years. All right. First off, I want to thank the town commissioners, mayor, town manager, the town staff, and the planning board members for serving our community. I do appreciate your involvement, even though I may not agree with you and I may not have voted for you. Secondly, I'd like to commend Commissioner Mike King for saving at least one life and maybe two this past week after a boating accident in the coastal waterway. Thank you for your quick thinking, Mike." All right, I've got a list of reasons here for you not to move forward on this boat ramp purchase. "The property is too small, number one. Number two, too close in proximity to the existing private ramp. Too much increased street traffic, number three. Number four, increased boat traffic. Way too much boat traffic for that little basin. Lower my neighborhood property values, number five. Number six, the financial effect on the private ramp owners that have gone in there and committed to our neighborhood. I'm very concerned that the town going in there and putting in a state-of-the-art ramp and charging a hundred dollars a year is gonna get people from the private ramp over to the town's ramp. It's just not big enough to do that and it's gonna hurt the people that have helped our community. It's too expensive." Number seven. "Number eight, Cape Carteret can't afford an inadequate facility. We, if we're gonna do it, we gotta do it right." Number nine, sustain the cost. The fees aren't gonna keep it up, so that comes out of taxpayer's pocket. "Number 10, potential for regular flooding. Like I said, I've got a little bit of history with this property." And number 11, initial $250,000 to purchase the property, but likely over a half a million needed improvements and some people are saying as high as a million dollars worth of all done. We don't have that kind of money to put into this thing. "I have recently been active in the fight to defeat the Cape Carteret Trail Bond referendum. I wasn't against the trail, but only against using more taxpayer money to pay for it. Now, I'm against this proposed boat ramp and park and fighting to keep it from happening because the logistics simply don't work. I'm not a negative person. I'm very optimistic, but even more practical and physically responsible. But it's not about me and it's about the residents of this town. Likewise, it isn't about you. If we had a golden opportunity before us like was made available to Cedar Point, it would be a no-brainer. But we don't and this isn't the right piece of land for this purchase. I'm not trying to keep anyone from having access to a boat ramp. And by the same token, it's not for me to provide one to the residents that don't have one. I chose to live in Bayshore Park because we have water access. Some chose to live on the golf course. Most people chose to live in Cape Carteret just because it's a great place. As with everything in life, we live with the consequences of our own decisions." This next part is something that I've been meaning to say. Okay, well, then, I'll just say this. "The residents of Bayshore Park are very close and also close to the non-resident property owners in our neighborhood. It seems like when there's an idea or issue concerning Bayshore Park, nobody sees any input from us and we're the last ones to talk about. They're tired of being treated like a red-haired stepchild and I'm asking the town commissioners to please reach out to them. Please vote against this project. Thank you."
All of it is here. So, the only other one that's coming online is...
You got the speakers?
It wouldn't work for me, that would make...
I'd like to remind everybody, please cut your speakers off so we can hear everybody. So, Charlie, Charlie Evans is the last person to speak. And he's online, so Zach, if you could get him squared away.
That may be more than Zach can handle. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Board of Commissioners. My name is Charlie Evans. We live at 213 Taylor and Ocean Road here in Cape Carteret and I thank you for this opportunity to speak to you about this financing plan. I'll email a copy of this statement to the town clerk tonight, but as I'm sure you're aware, some of you may be painfully, this, this topic, in the absence of any meaningful communication from town hall, has once more lit up a number of social media pages. I'm not here to speak to the relative merits of the property in question. That's not on the agenda. I'm simply here to talk to the financial component. I doubt I'm the only one that is not sure how we got to this stage of the game, but I wanna make sure we don't get the horse before the cart, so to speak. By that, I mean that most, I believe, are unaware of any public discussion, hearing, or even an open session board discussion on whether this is a sensible expenditure of taxpayer dollars or not. Compound that with the signed seller financing agreement way back on 700. Make one hope that while this may have been discussed in a closed-session environment, there must have been an open session element where the board of commissioners authorized the town manager to proceed with negotiations. Discussing financing at this point seems to presume citizens, through their elected officials, even want the property. It also makes it seem like it is already a relatively done deal and we're simply getting the financing in order to cover some previously negotiated commitment. So, $250,950 repaid in five annual installments at an interest rate of 2 and 3/4 percent comes to a minimum of $50,190 a year. That appears to be the only known element to this equation. There are several unknowns, though. Where do you propose to get those funds? To cover that without an across-the-board reduction in our current budget equates to a minimum of a penny and a quarter add to our tax increase just for the purchase. Do you plan a tax increase to buy, pay for this? How much additional funding will be required to make the property useful in any circumstance? Since you've been working on this since August, there must be some estimate to complete. And where do you propose to get that funding to accomplish any of the development options? A waterfront park, a new boat ramp, or a combination? Another tax increase or some grant money, which by the way, comes with its own set of issues? So, just from the funding side, with some significant gaps in at least my understanding of both the near-term and longer-term associated cost and budget impacts, I urge you to vote no. And as a procedural matter, and as a procedural matter, I ask that you get the horse before the cart and have the appropriate board discussion, public hearing, on even purchasing the property in the first place. Thank you for your service to our town.
All right. All right, with that, that's everybody that has signed up to speak this evening in public comment sections. So, and motion to come out of public comment. And with that, we've closed public session. The motion that Commissioner King said, I will now do a roll call. Commissioner Waters. Commissioner King. Mr. Moore.
Mayor, I'm having a problem hearing you with all the microphones. I'm counting one, two, three, four, five public microphones on and I can't, I didn't even hear the motion.
Okay, the motion, the motion was to come out of the public comment.
Okay.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, I'm a yes, I can hear you great now, thank you.
All right.
Outdoor for stereo mode.
Trying to get the board fixed up here in town hall. Commissioner Nalitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
And Commissioner Waters?
Yes.
All right, with that, we've closed public session. We're back on here. Got our... ready to go, so as soon as... Somebody evidently has a... I'm gonna look now and boot the, the commissioner comments. I'll let Commissioner King begin.
Mayor Baker, would you once again inform the people that are tuning in to please cut their mics off?
Yes, please, listen to Commissioner Martin. If you can't, please cut your mics off so we can... What's going on? Caller three, caller one, so mic screen. Donna, Dorothy, please cut your mics off. I don't know if you can cut them off or not, Zach.
Yeah.
Soon as we get them down, we'll let, I'm gonna put the speaker in front of Commissioner King. Okay.
Yeah, I'll cut them off. I'll get back in there.
All right, can you hear better now? Everybody okay? We got two callers, trying to get them squared away, but I'm gonna go ahead and let Commissioner...
That's a lot.
And you're okay?
Thank you.
Okay, good. I want everybody here, that's why it's very important, people, unless, unless you're being asked to speak, please leave your microphones off. So, Commissioner King, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Zach, are you gonna put me on camera now?
Yep, you're on the app.
Oh, okay. This is the first opportunity we have had as a board to make the discussion of this property purchase public. All the other sessions were closed sessions and required by statute to protect the seller. So, this is the first time, opportunity to talk in public. I don't, it's, I'm getting some feedback on that thing.
Is there anything?
Okay, okay. There's a lot of comments on social media and I have no social media accounts, but my wife has read a lot to me and several people have contacted me regarding this issue through email and I have responded to that. So, what I wanna do is just take some time to talk about what's going on here. I've been in the town about 20, 22, 23 years and been on this board in one capacity or another for about 20 of them. And in the very beginning, when I came down here, I worked to get the boat ramps that we currently have in place. I started with the one in Bayshore and at that time, the owner of that property was, when we, well, I tried to get a lease from him for, a long-term lease for the town to use that site. He told me that he was gonna lease it to the Bayshore community, which he did. And that community, the Bayshore Association, ran that ramp, did some improvements there, made it usable, and did a credible job of providing that for their community, community, it wasn't for the town in general. When I was denied that, getting a lease for the town, I went to the owner of the Street Ramp and was able to get a 25-year lease agreement for that, for the town. And both of those ramps have been operating continuously since about 2006 without issues and I, I wanna see that, that continue. There's two other properties in the town that could be used as boat ramps. That's the, the one at Live Oak down before the Harbor Light and the one on Lejeune Road. I inquired about the one, the Live Oak Ramp, and that was not available. So, what we had when I looked for an extension of the lease on Manatee Street wasn't successful in, in getting an extension of that lease. And I did talk to one of the owners of the Bayshore Nine and they gave me a price that was well off to what was reasonable, which meant they didn't wanna, wanna sell it. That is, that went from the Bayshore Association to the Bayshore Nine and now it's privately owned as is the Manatee Street. So, how did we get into this and how did Zach get into this? In order to do a property purchase, the board gives this assignment to the town manager and he has done all of the work. And unfortunately, up until now, it's been in closed session. So, this board directed the town manager in July unanimously to look into offers and the only offer we came up with was the Lejeune offer, which we spoke about tonight. I wanna say a couple of comments. If you people have read our ordinance, Marina facilities can be operated privately or publicly in all residential districts. And my concern with this situation we have, where we have two privately-owned ramps, one, we can't get an extension on the lease, and the other is privately owned and only allows the, the community to use it. My concern was, we could lose this and then where are we gonna be? So, I was looking for a opportunity for this town to own forever, a boat ramp site that could be used by the entire community, communities in Cape Carteret. And that turned out to be the Lejeune Ramp. Now, you could make a case for two ramps in one location and that is undesirable. And I agree with the people who spoke on that and I wouldn't want to be in a situation where there's two ramps going side by side. But what if the Bayshore Nine... But what if the Bay Shore Nine sells that to a private investor, a developer? It could end up being a, it could end up being a, a couple houses and with some creative septic work, you could put two, maybe even possibly three houses over there, which would take the boat ramp away. Or it might be sold if somebody wants to run it as a boat ramp and then it is run as a profit motive to make as much money as we can. I don't know that that would be desirable. But I would think if we bought this property and the Bay Shore ramp continued to operate as it has over the years, there wouldn't be any need at this immediately to put any kind of a ramp in there. It would only be put in at a time when we didn't have any way to have a ramp over there. So basically what purchasing these properties is to have the town to have an opportunity in the event we can't successfully negotiate for a ramp either on Manatee or in Bay Shore. So if we come out of choices, we would at least have a backup, a backup option to put one. With regard to the, that working okay, Zach?
Yeah, it's just going a little better.
Okay, all right, thank you. Let's see, where was I? When you look at the, at the Le June property, the ideal, let's say we were able at some point in time to acquire the Bay Shore for the town. Why that property could be split, we could keep the lower end down there by the block house as a park and the rest could be sold as a residential lot. So there's a lot of opportunities for the town if we own this and gives us some flexibility to at least have a ramp when this is all done. And that lot does have a current septic permit on it. People say, well, you're putting out all this money and what are you going to do with it? Well, I will tell you this, that that land, if we own it, will appreciate faster than a savings account at Wells Fargo. So in the long haul, if, if, if we just put a park in there without a boat ramp, we wouldn't lose, we could use that money towards purchasing another property. There's a lot of, it gives us some options. This particular thing goes, our options on this expire at the end of December, so this is likely to be an agenda item for our December meeting. And I would encourage any people that want to talk about this to call me. I'm very disappointed that I've only had two people call me through these three months we've been talking about this. And the restrictions of the closed session, they're over now. So we can talk about this freely amongst ourselves as commissioners and commissioners and citizens. So in closing, I'd say if the town passes on the opportunity to purchase a property for a waterfront, waterfront park or launch site, it could be sold and residents of the Bay Shore will have no opportunity at all to input on the sale or provide input on its uses when it's bought by a private entity. At least with the town, you have opportunity to come down here, bend our ear and it's taxpayer money, so you have a right to have a say in this matter. One other thing I wanted to say is some of you may have read in the paper about tugboat accident where a boat cap was capsized and a man went in the water. And I was, happened to just be one that was first on the scene and I did what I could to get this man out of the water. But I want to, what I want to do is, there was a young man who runs Tobo U.S. out in our waters and his name is Crockett Henderson. And he was on the scene almost immediately. And this young man knew exactly what to do and did exactly what needed to be done and, and helping me get this man up on his boat, started CPR. And then we got another man on the boat and we ended up taking, taking the guy down to the boat ramp in Cedar Point where the fire and EMS people picked him up. But I just want to commend this young man who lives in Cape Codderet, Crockett Henderson. We are most fortunate to have a young man that's operating Tobo U.S. on our waters outside of our town. Just a fine young man and was really a Johnny on the spot for us. That's all I have, Mayor.
All right, while moving stuff around, Commissioner Miller, you have any comments?
No, not this time.
All right, Commissioner Nalitz?
I understand that now we're going to have to have another meeting within twenty-four hours or after twenty-four hours to discuss financing and to decide what to do. Do we have a time or a date?
Well, we just have to, just have to give another twenty-four hours for any additional public comments coming in.
Right, so when do we meet again?
I have to ask Zach, but I don't think we have to have another special meeting. Until, until the, the next board meeting.
Oh, okay, so no, no discussion among the commissioners of the financing until the December meeting, is that right?
I think so.
Excuse me, Mayor, we do have to vote on the financing after a twenty-four hour period. I would, and, and Mr. Nalitz, I'm not trying to step on your toes, but I think it's, I think if we do, we should address that after the commissioner's comments as a separate agenda item. I'm sorry, Jim, sorry.
Do you mean tonight?
I mean, we. As far as setting up a date for the vote, we have, we are, we have to vote as a board on the financing, but I think it would be appropriate to talk about a date after our commissioner reports. That's just my feeling.
Okay. The only other thing I want to talk about was the knuckle boom truck. Glad to see it out and working. So I already picked up some very ancient piles in my neighborhood. And, and I got a bunch to put out for the December pickup. I hope that we can, going forward, use this truck now that it's ours, at least quarterly and maybe eventually every other month. I, I had one neighbor suggest that since we've got the thing, instead of letting it sit idle for, for six months, that if somebody decided to get ambitious and clean up his own yard, we could have them come in for a fee, maybe a hundred bucks and pick up his load and take it away. That way it just wouldn't be sitting there doing nothing. Yes, Jim. And that's all I've got.
All right, Commissioner Martin?
Commissioner King kind of caught me off guard, Mayor. I didn't realize we were going to be able to discuss anything about the property. First, I'd like to verify from the town attorney if I'm, if I'm allowed to speak like Commissioner King did.
Yes, sir.
Is that a yes?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I happen to have my notes just in case this, this came up, so I hope y'all packed your supper. First off, I'd like to echo Commissioner King's thanks to Crockett Henderson. I know the family, great family, great Christian family. They reside in Star Hill and Aaronall. Mark Henderson's his father. He, he was raised right, I can tell you that. Thanks, thanks for what they did, he did. I want to start first, second, I'm going to address the, the potential boat ramp property purchase, but first, I'm going to address my fellow commissioners, Mayor and the town manager. I have heard the citizens loud and clear, the one concern they all share is they want more emphasis placed on the infrastructure, which includes paving, debris removal and flooding issues. As you all know, we were able to dedicate over thirty thousand dollars extra towards the fall paving project in our last budget meeting. This was a move in the right direction, but we need to do more. Tonight, I'm asking Zach Steffi to provide the board of commissioners with his paving priority list. Also, please supply results from your culvert inspections. I would like you to include any paving projects that you feel that the public works can do in-house. And I would like for the town manager to provide the board with a list of what he perceives as flooding hotspots, so we can discuss those also. Guys, it's time to get off the pot and do something about these issues. We kicked the can down the road too long. People deserve better. We need to do, we need to, we need to do better for these people. I want to get on to this potential purchase here. I want to repeat something former Commissioner Charlie Evans said, we're, we're getting the cart before the horse here. We asked Zach Steffi to do a fact finding mission on that property and due diligence. And to date, we've only gotten bits and pieces of that via email. We have not gotten anything in a closed session. The due diligence has not been done on that property. The town is advocating putting a boat ramp in there when they don't even have a boat ramp permit in hand. It's ludicrous in my mind. We struggled to buy one police car this year, knowing we need to replace the fleet within two years. Now we're looking at spending quarter million dollars on a piece of property. I'm all for property. And I gave, I voted to give Zach authority to investigate this property. I am in no way agree with putting a boat ramp in the same canal as an existing boat ramp. And it's only a disaster waiting to happen. I have seen no appraisals or comps on the property. I may have overlooked that, Zach, I did, I'm sorry. Due diligence has not been completed. I have not seen an environmental impact study. No notifications that I know of have been sent to the surrounding property owners. I have heard nothing from Paxton Holt's concerning her going to take the Manatee boat ramp away from the town or not willing to extend the lease past twenty thirty-one. We have a boat ramp that serves our community over here just fine. No ones that bother to do the stu, to read the study on the rising sea levels, which is going to impact that property down there within thirty years. I know chances are I'll probably be dead and gone, but, but if we buy a property, it'll be underwater in my opinion, part of it anyway. By the way, those sea level studies are, are out there, look, look for them, you can find them. No other town on eastern North Carolina owns boat ramp property. We're the only town that does. The county just closed on a piece of property called the Stroud Track right on the other side of Bogar Field. I talked to the county assistant manager the other day. They're on go for less than twenty-four months. I have an one hundred and eighty-two to two hundred parking facility free of charge for boat ramp. It's only a mile and a half from our outskirts. I think we're putting our wants past our needs. Only way we can do this is a tax increase. Anybody tells you otherwise, they're not speaking the truth. The parking issues down there, if there was a boat ramp, people will be backing in on the blind side, shining, shining lights in private citizens' bedrooms, all hours of the night, partying, drinking as they do other places in town, diving off piers, trespassing, you name it. Bear with me, I'm reading notes, I was not prepared for this. My question too is why all of a sudden, after we've leased a Manatee boat ramp for all of these years, we're now concerned about losing it? I mean, I've heard nothing from this Holt's. I don't know, maybe someone else has, I have not. And, and there's no way that this board of commissioners, if they bought that property, could, could guarantee that a future board would not go in there and put a boat ramp right on top of the Bay Shore boat ramp. There's no way you can guarantee that. You might won't wish that, tell people, well, we, we don't have plans to do that. But look, guys, we're not going to be around forever. Future boards can do whatever they want to do. No restrictions on them. I'll tell you, I could go on and on and on, but I'm going to be be very blunt and say at this time, I, I cannot support purchasing that property for all the reasons that I mentioned and, and, and trust me, I've got more here, but I'm not going to bore you with it. I will say this. At the conclusion of the commissioner's comments, I fully intend, Mayor Baker, to make a, a motion to table discussion, vote on financing this property. Thank you.
All right, thanks Steve. Commissioner Waters?
I believe we should do a bond referendum on this. I'm just kidding, just kidding.
Hear you better.
That better? Okay, I said, well, maybe we should do a bond referendum and see what the public have to say, but I'm just kidding. In regards to this, the property down Le June Road, if anybody had been in this town longer and knew more about the properties in this area, it's me, been here all my life. It is a beautiful piece of property. I do have, do know that back in the day, we used to take the ferry from there over to the beach to get to the beach before the bridge was built. It is a landmark in my mind, it is a landmark as far as I'm concerned. However, I do have reservations as far as having a boat ramp installed there because where the property is located and the way, how much money it would cost to get it up to par for, for this property to be used in accordance to what it'd be used for. I think this is something that we should get more input from, from the other commissioners. I don't think it's something we should move on quickly. I believe it's something we should just continue to look at it, just take a breath with this and then move forward in, in moving in the direction that we need to for not just the Bay Shore Park area folks, but for everybody that's in this town. We're not just talking about the Bay Shore folks, we're talking about everybody, every citizen in this town. I know the Bay Shore folks have concerns about a park or even a boat ramp being installed there, I understand that. But the town belongs to everybody, so that's something we need to consider as well before we go forward. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Nothing else. Does my heart good to see the community, whether they're for it or against it, coming in here and speaking their voice. That's, that's what it's all about. I just hope we can see more of that. The past election, I think, for our town, we were at eighty-four percent on the election. That's awesome, at eighty-four percent. The trail was defeated by forty-four votes as far as that bond goes. Discuss all that later as far as what we want to do with the future of it. But I just think that's awesome, we had that type of turnout and, you know, forty-four votes, what a difference. But when you have, you know, almost fifteen hundred people out of a two, town of two thousand, I, I think that speaks a lot for, for the voices that's been heard. Like I said, just want to give a good kudos to the people from Bay Shore and the other ones that have spoke here, either for or against. And Don Miller. I thought I said Don earlier, but I forgot you, Don, I'm sorry. I'll get you a chance to speak here. I'm sort of going blind, I left my glasses at home, please forgive me, y'all. Where did Don go? There he is, he's back. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm here. Now, you already called on me, Mr. Mayor. I don't have any.
Given a note that said they're calling you, so evidently they forgot, but I, but I think you, you have spoken, so good, I did something. I wasn't questioning my own mind there, somebody else was questioning, but anyway. All right, so. So with that public comment, we needed to schedule another meeting. Or I understand, Commissioner Martin, you were wanting to make a motion?
Yes, I am.
Yes, I am, Mayor. In light of the fact that, uh, we have not been provided due diligence or any fact findings, they, they've trickled in via email, which I, I, I have a problem with that. Uh, we have not went back to closed session to obtain any fact findings on this property whatsoever. I feel like a mushroom sometimes. I feel like I'm left in the dark. Uh, also, my understanding, it was published on the town, uh, website, $250,000 for the purchase price. And I could have sworn Zach Steffi told me it's 305. That's neither here nor there. I want to make a motion, Mayor Baker, to, to table the vote or, uh, or another meeting on the perch, uh, financing of this property.
All right. So motion made.
Second.
As a point of order, to table a motion that hasn't been made, you can't do that. You've got to make the motion of what you want to do, not table a motion that hasn't been made.
I'm ma- I'm making a motion to not vote on the financing of this property by board of commissioners.
So, so Commissioner Martin has made a motion to not vote on this with the table till the December meeting. Is that correct? Can't hear you, Steve. Cut your mic off.
My motion is to kill the vote, for lack of a better term, on, uh, by the board of commissioners on financing this property.
Okay, so. I need clarity, uh.
Uh, I turn to the cell, uh, Brett, would you help me here? I'm making a motion for the board not to take up a vote on this financing this property.
Is that until such time as the due diligence factors that you mentioned before are considered? Are you, are you, I think what the confusion is, are you asking that the financing not be considered until such time as the, um, discussion on whether to purchase the property is considered?
Cut your mic off, Steve.
That's, that's correct, Brett. Uh, what, what you said, I'm making the motion to, to table it. Mike King says I can't table it, but I'm making the motion to table a vote. Devote on financing the property until we have been provided due diligence and facts on this property, which we have not been, uh, uh, given to full extent.
All right. So the motion is to table the vote on the financing till due diligence has been acquired.
That's correct.
Yes, you're correct. All right. So is there a second for that?
I second.
Okay, Jim has seconded. So I'll now do a roll call vote. Uh, Commissioner Martin?
Yes.
Commissioner Nalens?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
No.
Uh, Commissioner Waters? Yes, uh, vote carries, supported one. We should table this. We're still be accepting the public comments though for the next 24 hours though. So if anything comes in, uh, we'll have that forwarded to the next board meeting. Is that the way we need to do that, Brett?
Yes, absolutely. So that you have to have this public hearing. It has to happen for 24 hours and they can still, uh, write in their comments. And then if this is discussed again in the future, um, if those comments will be brought to the board at that time.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Make sure I've got my procedures right. Still getting used to all this stuff.
Doing a good job there.
And the virtual stuff is just killing me, guys. I can't wait till we can do this in person. I'd rather be screwing up in front of everybody. But anyway, uh, next on the agenda is the, uh, event and the fee schedule for fiscal year 2020 to 2021. Zach?
All right, Mayor Baker. I'm gonna run in there real quick and adjust the camera and then I'll get us started.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I think we made an amendment on the adoption of the agenda to move commissioner reports up to this time.
We just did that. We just did the commissioner reports.
Okay. All right.
Well, you got to go to.
Okay. No, I'm good. I, I thought, I thought we were still speaking on the public comments. Okay.
And if you got something else you'd like to say, though, I set up the camera. Feel free to go right ahead.
I know I will, what, yes, I will add one thing, uh, while we're waiting for Zach. I want to, first, I want to, I appreciate what, uh, Zach brought up in the staff updates. I, I like the fact of what they're doing now with highlighting the various animals in the animal shelter for adoption as we approach the holiday season. I think that's a great thing. Uh, cause as, as many people may know, I'm, I'm a big animal lover. And every, every dog or cat I've pretty much had in the last many, many years has been a rescue animal. So I'm all for pulling these animals out of the shelter. I just would caution people as we approach the holiday season to remember that the adoption of an animal, I mean, it's a lifelong commitment, at least the lifelong for, for that animal. And a lot of people will go pull an animal out of a shelter to give it to a mother, father, son, daughter, friend, relative, whoever for a Christmas present, because they think it's a nice Christmas present. And then after the nudeness wears off, six months later, they're dumping it back into shelter. I just ask people to remember that. If you do pull an animal out of a shelter for adoption, to make sure it is because that animal's going to a good home and not just because you want to give somebody a neat Christmas present. And I'll leave it at that.
All right. Thanks, sir. Thanks, Zach. Is that ready?
Trying to get everybody in there.
Hang on. I'll still be, I'll still be well below 16 feet. I would also add, I had some great comments about the drive-in. Some people saw me and, uh, they, they came, brought their kids. Kids really enjoyed that. So it's nice. We could do something, uh, right now. Uh, the way things are, who knows? It might even get worse. Maybe shutting back down again, but yeah, it was having a little rest of the people that really came did enjoy the movies and I had several comments when I was at the, uh, White Oak School last week about our SRO officer and how much they appreciate him and the great job he's been doing. Uh, there, they don't have too many positive rail model, excuse me, positive male role models over at the school. It's like, I think they only got one other guy that works there at the school other than seeing our male officer. That's, that's the only really positive male role model these kids get during the day. And they get to see a police officer in a positive aspect. So I just want to throw some, uh, hail out to, to that officer, I think. Is it Destinon?
Yes, sir.
To Stefan. I'm sorry for mispronouncing the name, but but please let him know, uh, uh, that he is appreciated. Zach, ready?
Yeah, uh, let me get to. All right. I think the agenda might be out of, maybe it's out of order. Hold on just a second. Yeah, so just remind, I'll scroll up to the next item for the parking. Um, so we'll go ahead and start this off. The town of Cape Carteret is planning to begin accepting credit cards for various transactions. The fee table has been revised to reflect cash and check pricing as well as credit or charge card pricing. The credit and charge card price reflects the processing fee that is set by the bank, which is Wells Fargo, which is currently 2.6%, along with an additional 15 cent per card swipe fee that is charged by Wells Fargo. Several fees have been added to the table to ensure that the table is up to date. And the requested action is for the board of commissioners to consider approving the proposed amended fee schedule for FY 2020, 2021. And I'll go ahead and put the fee schedule on the screen. So you'll see the left column is what the price would be for cash or check and the right column would be what it would be for a credit or charge card. Uh, so this basically reflects, it's a pass through of what the fee is that will be charged by the finance, financial institution for taking a credit card. Um, so we've reflected those amounts in the right-hand column for all the different charges, um, and all the different, uh, fees that we charge here. So I just request, uh, board commissioners consider approving the proposed FY 2020, 2021 fee schedule.
Okay. Just reading over. Uh, do I have a motion to accept the fee schedule?
I'll make a motion to accept that fee schedule.
Okay, second.
Second.
Commissioner Waters, seconds. Okay, I'll now do a roll call vote. Commissioner King?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Discuss, Mr. King?
Yeah, uh, this is one of the few places in the world left that when you go with a credit card, it's a different price than what you pay for. I can't remember the last time that, uh, somebody gave me a different price when I paid in cash as opposed to a credit card. So and I kind of like this because it tells you that little plastic card that you carry around in your pocket, how much you, you, it costs you because it's in the cost of the goods that you buy in most places. And here we separate it and give the people a choice. Thank you, Zach.
Any other comments? I think you got his mic off. I just asked if you had any comments. Jim, did you have any comments? You did. Cut your mic off.
No, I have no comments. Well, actually.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Moore?
No, I don't have any comments.
Okay, Commissioner? Any comments? Okay, guys. I will do that. That's Commissioner Waters. Okay. All right, a little roll call vote then. Commissioner King?
Yeah.
Uh, Christian Waters? Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
And Commissioner Nalens?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Five to zero. Uh, next is the designation of a no parking area in Manatee and Bow Glane.
I'm trying to work out some camera challenge here.
I'll be glad when we go back in with everybody in the same room. Very difficult.
I guess, uh, well, that would also be possible if I had to say hello, I guess. I'll be, I'll listen up.
All right.
All righty. Property owner of the property, okay, thank you, Mayor Baker. Uh, the property owner of the property that's located on the corner of Manatee Street and Bow Glane has requested that the area on the front inside of their property be designated as no parking area. Uh, the area is directly across from the town's lease boat ramp facility. During the busy summer months, the area across from the lease boat ramp is frequently used for parking boat trailers. Parking on this corner creates congestion at the intersection and may also block driveways of the new residents at 205 Bow Glane. Uh, the requested action is for the board of commissioners to consider approving text amendment 2020 dot 11 dot 01 to chapter 74, which is parking schedules of the Cape Carteret Code of Ordinances. So I've shown the areas there in red. So it'd be from the stop sign at the end of Manatee to the end of that lot and then also headed north on Manatee Street through the property boundary. Um, and that's described in the proposed ordinance. So 105 feet north and 155 feet west from the northwest corner of the intersection of Manatee Street and Bow Glane.
All right. Do we have a motion to, uh, approve the designation of a no parking area for Manatee and Bow Glane?
I'll make, I'll make the motion. Do I have comments?
Okay. So I have, I have a motion. I have a second and then we'll open it up to comments.
A second for purposes of discussion.
Okay, Commissioner King. All right. Uh, Commissioner Waters, I'll let you begin with discussion.
Zach, one of my questions I have, I know I have the chief here in the room with us this evening. But when there's a no parking sign that is erected on Side Street, how far does the enforcement go with that in distance from that sign?
Usually, so the way that the ordinance reads it, a lot of times it's specified how far it goes. That's why in this proposed text amendment, it, it lists 105 feet and 155 feet. Um, most of the times in the ordinance, that's what it references, are references to a certain cross street where it's effective.
Well, I, I don't know. I, I don't think we should be micromanaging this type of ordinances. My feeling with this is if there's a no parking sign needed, which could go under the direction of the, uh, chief and also the, um, town manager's act, I'd recommend that the town implements a footage on every side, such as 100 foot from this side. If you need another 100 foot down, then you put another sign up and it extends to that distance. Therefore, it gives people knowledge how far they can park away from that no parking sign. But just putting it up in certain areas and they, people really don't know where they can and cannot park. So I recommend we put, uh, under direction of the, the, uh, manager and, and the chief as far as distance from each side and where to be placed it. So we don't have people coming back in the session and say, yeah, we will put a no parking sign there. I believe that's why we have a manager to recognize that and have to worry about going to the board.
That's right. Commissioner King?
Yeah, um, I looked at that and observed it for many years. Uh, I think if you put a sign on the Manatee Street, it would have to be between the sides, you know, just from his property. But, and they do park there. Uh, I don't know what it is. Issue doesn't instruct his driveway. To want a Bow Glane, I don't think it needs a sign because there ain't enough room to put a car there without getting your, without getting, uh, your wheels in a ditch. It's, it's that close. You, you, you could not get off the pavement and put a car there. So I don't know why anybody would choose to park there. And that's the side that the man's driveway is on. And nobody's going to park in front of this driveway. I've never seen a car parked on that side of Bow Glane, although I have seen them on the Manatee Street. So if it did anything, I would recommend it be the Manatee Street, but even then I don't know that it's necessary.
Mr. Miller, you have any comments? Don, you got any comments?
No, other than I would just echo what, uh, Commissioner Waters has already said. I think I think if we do put signs up, I mean, it's got to be clear where people can park and not park. I mean, and a lot of times what you see, put a sign up that says, no parking from here to intersection or, or something along that line, where you put a couple of signs up where it's very obvious, you're not worried about how many feet from the sign you can park, but you know you can't park anywhere from where that sign is up to the next intersection.
Okay. All right, Commissioner Moore, comments?
Yeah, Zach, do, uh, does the town currently let people park their boat trailers up and down Manatee Street?
Yes, yeah, people, people do park along the right of way there.
Is that, is that applicable throughout the town? Anybody can park on any right of way?
Yeah, that's correct.
So in other words, I can go to Commissioner Miller's house and park my boat and trailer in front of his house? I mean, theoretically, what you're saying is anybody can park on any town right of way in front of anybody's house?
Yeah, unless it's posted with no parking sign.
Okay. So I have no further comment.
And the sound.
Yeah, it kind of reminds me of the guy who builds his house at the end of the airport runway and then complains about the noise. Commissioner King is right about the bog, Bow Glane. There's no way at all that anybody can park there without using a tow truck himself out. But I like Commissioner Miller's idea of if we're going to approve it, no parking from here to the corner. If we were, if we had, if we had sidewalks and curbs, we just paint that curb yellow, but we don't, so I guess it's fine.
Okay. I'll also echo that same thing as far as, okay, you know what I mean, if you're going to, I think Manatee's only issue, real issue, would be where his driveway's at or from like having a sign say no parking from here to the corner would be the way to go. So if we could do that wording, I think that would be fun. But that issue, we've got the, I guess we've got amended, but we've already got the motion to do the no parking area of Manatee and Bow.
You could amend the motion.
So if we can, if you want to amend the motion to go, as you suggested.
Yeah.
So we're going to amend the motion to where we're going to designate no parking with proper coverage just on Manatee from property lot to corner.
Yeah, it has to be specified on that sign so the law enforcement will know how to process it.
All right, so that's, okay. So with that, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second, King. All right, we'll do a roll call vote then. Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Waters?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
No.
Commissioner Nalos?
Yes.
And Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
All right, motion carries four to one. Uh, next on the agenda is the selection of the 2020 fall paving project and contract. Zach?
All right, thank you Mayor Baker. And just for some additional information, the signs that we currently have that we've ordered and are here, they say no parking between this sign and then the other sign and they have arrows that point at each other. That way it's very clear exactly where people can't park. So I will put those in on Manatee Street consistent with, with that motion. All right.
Okay.
Maybe, I'm, I'm, and for the sake of the folks at home, let me run in there. I know Chief's, I think, trying to keep the camera steady. I've got a different thing we can use in there. Let me do that so everybody doesn't get motion sickness.
Let's cut it off.
Let's try the melody. You had two friends over. Is Elias Sue is one of them?
Yes.
You were barbecuing and?
And we heard some noise at the front door. Up front and we didn't see anything. And then we heard the back door getting broken into. We had one of those little doggy doors that you could just pull down and he broke that to get into the house.
Had you locked the house?
No, it was locked. Like you could pull the doggy door down. Oh, is the house locked? And he didn't have a key.
The house was locked. Was it deadbolt locked?
Yes.
So you could only open it from the inside? So whether he had his keys or not were irrelevant because you were. That's what he, yes?
Yes.
That guy was there, right?
This says I'm connected.
If it was questioning, somebody took video, I'd like to see. Diebe, the silent killer elevated in Gatin. So it was a bad idea. No, absolutely no sentence. There's simple things you can do right to change your life. See you later, cares. Tuesday on news.
It says you're connected using the internet. So I'm connected.
Miss Laura? Can you hear me?
Yes, but I don't know how to work this thing and I hope I'm not interrupting the meeting. I'm trying to just listen to you.
Yeah, if you can look at the bottom, there should be a spot where you can mute your microphone. Can we, because we can hear Judge Judy.
I'm so sorry. Good night.
You're okay. You're fine. We're in the break. You're okay.
All right, can everybody hear me? All right. The town of Cape Carter recently solicited proposals for the fall 2020 paving project, which includes several roadways throughout the town. The roadways included in the RFP are portions of Manatee Street, Dolphin Street, Anita Fort Drive, Park Avenue, Star Hill Drive, and Sutton Drive. The RFP specified that contractors should excavate and repair severely damaged areas by adding ABC stone. The RFP calls for an overlay of an inch and a half of asphalt. The town received five proposals from paving contractors, which are summarized in the table below. On the grading and paving, the total projected. They can hear me there? Hold on just a moment. Apparently they can't hear me in the boardroom, so I'll be right back. Did everybody hear me now in the boardroom? Yep, all right, we're good.
I just, we couldn't hear you.
Yeah, I think the volume was turned out a little. So we should be, make sure someone can get to you.
Nobody's touched that itself.
Yeah, it's all the way up, so we should be good. All right, Mayor Baker, can you hear me in the boardroom?
All right, we can hear you now, sir. Thank you.
Excellent. I'll go ahead and kind of summarize what I went over. We solicited proposals for the fall 2020 paving project. Was just running through the proposal amount. So on the grading and paving was $106,975. Barn Hill Contracting Company was $88,251.20. Able Asphalt was $144,892. East Carolina Builders was $196,909.60. And Tripp Brothers was $126,519. Based on the proposals received, it appears that Barn Hill Contracting Company provided the best value and the cheapest proposal. Therefore, staff recommends selecting Barn Hill Contracting Company as the contractor for the fall 2020 paving project. The requested action is for the Board of Commissioners to consider selecting Barn Hill Contracting Company as the paving contractor for the fall 2020 paving project and authorizing the town manager in consultation with the town attorney to enter into a contract with Barn Hill Contracting Company. And the attachments are the RFP that was put out as well as the contractor proposal.
All right, so I'll entertain a motion to accept the Barn Hill Contractor for the fall 2020 paving.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Moore. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner King. Any discussion? I'll start with you, Commissioner King.
Uh, when was the last time we used Barn Hill, Zach?
I don't think we've used Barn Hill since I've been with the town. I don't think we have, but I do know that we've used Barn Hill before in the past.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Mr. Waters? Commissioner Nalos, you have any comments?
No.
Commissioner Moore?
No comment.
Okay. Commissioner Miller?
No.
All right, and we'll just go with the roll call vote. Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Waters?
Yeah.
Commissioner Nalos?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
All right, thank you, gentlemen. Motion carries five to zero. Uh, next up is Police Department Vehicle Purchase and Design. Chief? Got your name by other than what's at his presentation? Okay, Zach, Chief has yielded your presentation, but he's here for questions, everybody.
I'll let, um, I'll let Chief read off his, uh, his memo here. Very straightforward. This was in the current FY 2021 budget and I'll let Chief run through his memo unless he needs, uh, I got a paper copy if he needs that.
Got a paper copy. Okay. Uh, I have attached the quotes for the purchase and equipping for the 2021 Dodge Charger along with the mock-up photos, which are included in your packets for the new design. The design was presented to the officers to unanimously chose the color and outline for the new vehicles. And below that is the estimated cost for the 2021 Charger. The chart, the quote that I've received thus far, the lowest quote, $24,773 plus docking fee, $789. Estimated tax and tag, $800. The cost to equip the vehicle out the door, $7,416.98 for a total, estimated total of And there is currently $34,000 in the capital improvement program, which should cover the outline for this vehicle.
All right.
So the requested action would be for the Board of Commissioners to allow the town manager to move forward with the purchase of the Dodge Charger, the 2021 Dodge Charger, and with the new design for the Cape Carter Police Department vehicle.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion then. Motion to purchase the police department vehicle with the designs that were mentioned. Okay, and I have a motion from Commissioner Waters. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Miller. And discussion, Commissioner King, any comments?
What, what vehicle is this replacing?
Well, we got, we've got three vehicles probably that need replaced, so we're going to make a decision on which one it will, it will replace.
Okay, well, the chart that I have that Zach gave us, how many miles on? I, I think it's important to know how many miles are on these things. There's a lot of police departments that run these things, 150, 200,000 miles. And I just, and I looked at this chart and we haven't got, now this may be out of date, okay?
It is.
What, so what kind of mileage are we covering?
We're, we're looking at around 80,000 on the, we actually got a little over 80,000 on the top of the vehicle right there. And of course, the two Tauruses that are in the play, 113,000 and the other one, a little bit more mileage than that.
That doesn't match up. We rarely need, Zach, you know, VIN number or something so we know which one we're talking about. And you're saying you're buying one, but you don't know which one you're replacing. And you're quoting me, you quote me, mileage is under 100,000 miles. And these cars today, I'm telling you, run 150 to 200,000 miles. Yeah, they do. Taxi cab, people do it all the time.
Mr. King, all due respect, these are law enforcement vehicles. These vehicles, you say mileage all day long, but they sit beside the road and their vehicle running, that adds a lot where a tireless engine, take it from me, we had done this before in purchasing the vehicles, they don't last long at all after 100,000 miles.
Well.
You have to replace them because if you want dependable vehicles, you got to have a vehicle there to mention these calls and services calls.
He cited vehicles with less than 100,000 miles.
I'm telling you, you say 80,000 miles in a car, I might as well say 160,000 miles in a car.
You have to all settle if you're an item, however.
That's what I'm talking about. That, that.
I understand that, but we're, we're buying a car, that's the eighth police car according to this chart, okay? And I'm assuming there's one per officer.
I will, if I can, if you'll allow me to, I've, I've been driving my personal truck for the last few days because we have our vehicles, they're in the repair shop.
So. All I just want is an answer to my question.
I understand. And, and we're discussing that as we speak, we have not made a definite decision which vehicle. I actually was in discussion with the sergeant yesterday about which vehicle it will replace.
Okay, so let me ask it this way then. Are you adding a vehicle? You know, this isn't very transparent and you're talking an expensive item.
Yes, sir, we need to add a vehicle at this point because we, and again, we, we have a spare car. The spare car is, is in the repair shop as we speak for the second time.
So this will be the second spare?
Correct, we need a second spare. We have, we have part timers that come in and work. And I'm sure it's, if many of y'all have seen my car driving around the town, but I wasn't driving my car. We didn't have enough vehicles to cover shifts. So yes, we need another, another spare. And we need to put, most likely, we will end up putting the two Tauruses with high mileage. We will most likely make those two the spare cars at some point. For sure, we're going to make one of them the spare. Just discuss that today.
Okay, that's how it should have been presented today.
Sir, I'm, I'm sorry.
Well, you presented to me that you're going to replace one. And, you know, when I buy a car and replace one, I know which one I'm replacing when I buy it. And I think I'm entitled to know that in this, in this particular instance. And we're, so.
VIN numbers would be very, very nice to have as far as descriptions of the vehicle and that. I would agree with that.
Uh, and for Zach, I'd like this spreadsheet because this is an excellent spreadsheet. And towards that, I'd like this spreadsheet, because this is an excellent spreadsheet. It has the average miles we're putting on the vehicle. You ought to put the VIN number or some license plate number, something, so we know which one it is. And the officer who was assigned that vehicle. You know, if you go back to the old army daddy, when you had a vehicle, everybody knew what vehicle it was and who owned it, who was responsible for it, so we could track things like maintenance.
Oh, my manager, Miss Sandy, just made me aware, she brought me out up to date, just since July of this year, we have spent just under $9,000 in vehicle repairs. $8,883.92.
Oh, I mean, eight vehicles, that's not so much. You know, you take it down for an inspection and oil change, you know, you're cutting 50, 60 bucks. So, anyway. Okay, I just, if you're going to talk to me about replacing equipment, you need to, we need to be more clear. I'd like to see that, that sheet updated.
All right. Mr. Waters? Any comments?
This is something that's definitely needed. I have seen these vehicles, the police vehicles here, Cape Carteret. Some of them are on their last leg. Heck, we had a department give us two vehicles, not give us, but got two vehicles to them, and then one of them went, went out quickly. One of the most important things you can have in a town, if you have a police department, is to have good equipment, good transportation, for them to do their jobs and to service the people that they, that they protect and serve. So, again, this is one of the reasons I do believe in the leasing program that we need to look at to keep these cars rotated, to have a dependable car. I think it's right down, ridiculous to have a chief of police riding around in his own personal vehicle when he comes to work. And that's not good at all. We need to actually look at that as far as moving forward, because that could be a liability issue. That's all I would say.
Commissioner Martin, comments?
Well, I was listening to the back and forth, but I did, I guess the gist of what I've been hearing in the, between Mike King and Jeff Waters and Chief, I did hear Mike asked if this was an extra vehicle, but I didn't hear the answer. Zach, I'm asking you, not the chief, is this an extra vehicle?
Yeah, and I just put the vehicles up on the screen that we had looked through in the last budget, so I would anticipate...
I'm not asking, I'm just asking you a simple question. Is this a replacement vehicle or an additional vehicle to the fourth, the police department's fleet?
Yeah, and I'm getting to my answer. So the vehicle two has a mileage of 104,857 is what is projected. So this is a replacement for vehicle two, the 2015 Dodge Charger. That would be the highest mileage vehicle in the fleet. That would be a replacement for that. And I would anticipate at some point we can start to surplus. But the other factor here is that it's going to take a little bit of time before they actually are able to bring this vehicle into the fleet and utilize it. So the mileage total might be much higher by that point in time. So that's why I wanted to pull up the screen that Commissioner King was referencing, and I think that's a good suggestion to also add the VIN numbers on there. All the vehicles do have a number that's on the back windshield that indicates which vehicle it is, but I think for the sake of discussion, it'd also be helpful to have the VIN numbers on there as well, just so we know what, which vehicle we're talking about. But to answer the question, I believe it'd be vehicle two, which is projected to have 104,857. It would be replacing that vehicle, and I do think it's going to be sometime on the order of maybe two or three months before we actually get the vehicle in place. So I believe we'll be close to that number at that point in time, based on the average usage of that vehicle.
Okay, let me ask you another question. I got a couple more questions. How many miles was on the, how many vehicles did we obtain from Emerald Isle PD?
We obtained two vehicles, which were two Taurus's.
Okay, where are they at on this list? Number one, number two, how many miles were on them when the Emerald Isle finished with them?
It was over 100,000 miles on those.
Okay, how far over 100, Zach? I don't see, I don't see them on the, the sheet here.
Yeah, and this was, this sheet was back from in the budget processes before these were entered in there. So this sheet will have to be updated, obviously, as we get into next year's budget discussion, so we can have that included in there.
I don't, I don't see, you know, I'm all for buying a car. We've already allocated the funds, okay? That's a no-brainer. I don't care. Buy the car, but I don't want to see us ended up with a junk, a junkyard full of used cars over there. You know what I'm saying? So I kind of like Commissioner King here. I think we need some, we need more information on this. I mean, you got, what, seven officers? How many cars do you need?
So we do have seven officers, and then we also have the hybrid position, which frequently would utilize the vehicle. And as Chief mentioned, I mean, the, what we've seen in terms of maintenance this year alone has been very substantial. I mean, we've had at least one or two vehicles out more often than not, and it's put, put the department in a position where, you know, Chief's having to drive his personal truck to and from work so that people can utilize his vehicle. So also, Sandy brought me the titles for the two vehicles, and the odometer reading on one of the vehicles was 111,906. And that was for a 2013 Ford Taurus, and for another 2013 Ford Taurus, the odometer reading was $108,090. So those are the two amounts, so we'll update the list accordingly for our discussions in the budget process.
Okay. Like I said, we, you know, we were fortunate enough to be able to allocate during the budget process one police car. So, you know, buy it whenever you want to. I mean, the money's there. It's been, it's been appropriated. I just, like I said, I don't want to see a bunch of junk, junk cars sitting over there, you know? So I just want to make one more, well, one comment I want to make. I love the paint scheme. It's great. I mean, it's awesome. I mean, I like the, it looks like the Batmobile, man. I mean, it's a cool-looking car. I like it, and I think the, I think the morale, the, I think they should, the chief should be able to choose his own colors of the car. I mean, it's a morale builder. I wish we could do better as far as providing the cars, but that's for discussion for a later day. Good job on whoever designed the scheme on. I love it, man. It's a good-looking car. Gosh, I wanted to say something else, but, Zach, is it appropriate to bring back to the board discussion on leasing these cars before the next budget process? Is that appropriate or, or no? I mean, I don't know the answer to that, but evidently we got a problem here. Just give us some thought, that's all. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Steve. Commissioner Miller?
I really couldn't hear much of what Commissioner King was saying. It was hard to understand. I did hear, all I got out of it, I heard something about 150,000 to 200,000 miles. I would say this, in 20 years in law enforcement, I never saw a police car with over 150,000 miles on it that was still reliable. I think that the highest mileage that was on the car I ever had was somewhere in the neighborhood of 120,000, 130,000 miles. And that was a car that I didn't have, just spent a lot of time in the shop. I didn't have a lot of faith in it until I could get a new one. I agree, the money's there. It's time to get the car. We need to get the car. But I also agree with the point that we're both for Zach and the chief. I mean, you need to be prepared to tell these commissioners, what's the plan for the other cars? We're not just buying a car to stack them up out there on the lot. I mean, you know, what car is this replacing? And we, you need to be prepared to tell everybody, entire board, you know, what are we doing here? We're buying this car, and what's going to happen with the rest of them? And I agree with the comments too. I mean, we knew, I was, I was on board. We started talking about possibly leasing cars this past year, and I'm still on board with that. It's something we need to look at in the future. But all in all, I mean, the money is there. I know they need the car. I am forgetting it.
Thank you, Don. Jim, comments?
I'm satisfied with everybody else's comments.
Okay. Well, I'm going to make this comment. We're still getting used to the manager form of government here. And unless there is something that needs to be done to the budget, amendment to cover the costs, this is part of the operating procedure, and shouldn't even have to become a report. Go buy your car, sir. We'll go ahead and do a vote, because we got a motion, so...
I think we take the motion away, because we've already approved the money.
We've already approved the money.
The money's on the purchase, so why are we even voting?
We've got the money in the budget, correct? Is that right? Brett, all right?
Well, it's in the capital reserves.
Yeah, I still think since it's been discussed today, and that it was brought before the board, it's a motion, that voting on it would probably be appropriate.
All right, thank you. Just want to make sure real things, right? All right, so for this instance, I'll ask for a vote. I'll start with you, Mr. Waters.
Yes.
Commissioner Martin?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Nalas?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller? All right, motion carries.
One side comment on that. Is that the direction you're going on color?
Yes, sir.
I don't want to see, you know, next year, you want a blue one or an arrow green.
We're going to have a uniform fleet that looks just like that picture. That's our goal. We want a uniform fleet. And that's...
Yeah, we keep them all the same.
Well, I know you've got one other one like that now.
Just, just out of the bar.
Smoke gray.
Yes, sir.
In the future, though, I mean, here again, you know, we're giving you the budget, but you got the money.
I apologize for that, sure, you're reaching...
No, that's fine. I mean, like I say, we're all learning here. It's all a new process.
We've got one coming in on the roll back in the morning, so we can put the other one in the shop Thursday, Wednesday morning, with a $1,300 repair that's due, that will be added on to this figure.
Okay. All right, Chief, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up is Stormwater for Sutton Drive.
And Mayor Baker, while we're, while we're on the, on the topic, the only reason that we were bringing it before the board this evening is my contracts, you know, provide the limit of $10,000 for my purchase limit, even if it's in the budget. The purchasing policy, the limit is much higher than that amount. If the board wanted to provide, you know, the direction just to go with the purchasing policy, that's what I was just looking forward from the board to provide that direction, that it's okay if it's consistent with the purchasing policy and with what's been budgeted. So just wanted to, as a formality, bring that up and something that we could address.
I can see your point. All right, we'll move on. Go ahead.
Yeah, and I was gonna say, if that's something, if that's the direction from the board, then I can certainly go with that for future items. If the board's preference is for me just to follow the town's purchasing policy, that'd be sufficient, you know, that the board's provided that direction.
Zach, I'd like to see that, I'd like to see that on as an agenda item to be discussed with the proper information supplied to us, not to do it tonight.
Okay, we can do that for the December meeting.
All right, Stormwater discussion, Sutton Drive.
All right, on Tuesday, June 16th, 2020, a series of strong thunderstorms moved on shore over Cape Carteret and dumped around five and a half inches of rainfall in just over an hour. The abnormal rainfall event occurred after the town had already received an inch and a half of rainfall earlier in the day. There were several areas throughout the town that experienced substantial flooding as a result of the rainfall event. One of the areas that was adversely impacted by the rainfall event were the properties along Sutton Drive. Several properties were submerged by floodwaters for several days as the town worked with Starhill Golf Course to abate the flooding. With the permission of Starhill Golf Course, the town installed a temporary swell to abate the floodwater. After the floodwaters receded, the town engaged John Freshwater of Crystal Coast Engineering to examine the flooding issue and to develop a suitable plan to prevent future flooding events. In our research and analysis following the flooding event, the town determined that the town has easement on the other side of the golf course fairway. However, the town does not have an easement that runs across the fairway. The town also has stormwater piping on either side of the golf course, however, the golf course retained control of the piping that runs under the golf course fairway. The flooding event in June was in large part caused by the abnormal nature of the rainfall event. However, additional issues exacerbated the extent of the severity of the flooding. The following issues were identified during our analysis of the flooding event. The pipe under Starhill Golf Course was clogged, which severely impacted the flow rate of stormwater. The pipe was unclogged by clogbusters, which improved the flow of the stormwater. The pipe under the Starhill Golf Course flows at a positive grade, which substantially slows the flow of stormwater. An earthen berm across the golf course blocks the natural flow of stormwater across the golf course, thus trapping the stormwater around the properties located along Sutton Drive and the southern portion of the golf course. Based on John, John Freshwater's analysis, it was determined that a grassy swell across the golf course would allow stormwater to flow across the golf course and to enter into the existing stormwater drainage system. Further, it was recommended that the pipe that runs under the golf course be reset to establish a negative grade, thus allowing stormwater to flow properly through the system. Staff is requesting direction from the Board of Commissioners on how to proceed with addressing the stormwater issues. There are several options that are available for the board to consider. The town could obtain an easement across the golf course to install and maintain a grassy swell to alleviate... Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so run through the options. The town could obtain an easement across the golf course to install and maintain a grassy swell to alleviate future stormwater issues. The town could obtain a temporary construction easement to install a grassy swell across the golf course and to allow the golf course to maintain the grassy swell through their regular fairway maintenance. Or the town could encourage the golf course to correct the issues with the stormwater pipe and to install the grassy swell per the engineer's specifications. And the requested action is for the Board of Commissioners to provide direction to staff on how to proceed with addressing the Sutton Drive stormwater issues. And also have in here are a post-event summary that kind of runs through some of the flooding that we saw from that storm event. This would be Sutton Drive. This would be on Sutton Place. This would be looking at the other side of the cul-de-sac on Sutton Place. This would be looking at that house we just saw that fronts the Sutton Place cul-de-sac, so this is taken from the golf course. Be another view, looking southeast from the fairway. Be another shot, looking southwest from the fairway. And this was on the golf course. You can see the area there where the water's being held back by that earthen berm that goes across the fairway. So when that earthen berm was pulled back, that allowed that floodwater to exit. So basically, the engineers calling for, you know, that swell to be installed right there in that area to allow the floodwaters to naturally flow through there. And this was here at the weather station at Town Hall on June 16th. You can see the spike just in a short period of time there. So you see right around, right, 7:00, 8:30 PM, see a pretty big spike. And this is an unusually high amount of rainfall. We got seven inches total on that day, but in just a very short period of time, got a very substantial amount of rainfall. So it is an unusual event for us, but not an unheard of event. And here's just an overview that shows the extent of where the floodwaters were, so the red being where the floodwater was located, and the green being where the, where a swell could be put in. That would address that, and that's basically where we dug that temporary swell to allow the floodwater to exit. where, uh, we dug that temporary swell to allow the floodwater to exit, so, um, like I said, the, uh, requested action is for the Board of Commissioners to provide directions to the staff, and here's the engineered plan, um, that John Freshwater came up with, and there's the, uh, uh, specification for the grassy swell that would go across, um, and just the detail on that, and then also a diagram showing the bottom of the swell location and the existing reinforced concrete pipe, um, and making some modifications to the box there on the north side of the fairway to allow that water to enter into the system. That's everything I've got, so if there's any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer those.
All right, so we got, you gave us three choices there, and I guess just to get this conversation started, if somebody would make a motion on one of the choices, they were just talking about it.
I think I could make a motion to enter in discussing on this situation without, uh, making a motion to adopt one of those, I think the proper thing would be to make a motion to enter in discussion, is that okay, Brett?
Typically, you'd have a, a actual motion on the floor, so a motion for or against, or again, if you wanted to table this for another time, discussion on this number of times, you could do that as well.
Okay, I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay, Mr. King, you have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we adopt, uh, the third option in your presentation, Zach.
Okay, so, so Mr. King has requested a motion to adopt the third option, do I have a second?
Okay.
I have a second, I have a second from Commissioner Waters, so we'll open up the discussion, and, uh, I'll start with you, Commissioner King.
Okay, uh, when I first came to service of the town, Buddy Do was our thing, and this was, when I first became a commissioner, I had Buddy kick me around, show me all the issues, and this is the first place he showed me. And since I've been here twenty years, this is the third, maybe the fourth time that those pictures that Zach showed me have occurred up there, and I've visited it in almost all of those instances. This last one on the date that you described, it came within one inch of, uh, covering the, the living floor of the, uh, single-story house, I can't remember exactly what street it is. I looked at, I, I walked at several times and looked at John Freshwater's design, and I will tell you this, that that design will do the job, in fact, you about had it half done when you went up there with the backhoe and you, uh, cut that out. If they'd just taken up the pipe, set the elevation, put the swell in and sod it, it would've been done, uh, 'cause that, that will solve the problem. I think that this, in, in the town, we have an ordinance for residences that you can't put your stormwater on your neighbor's property, and here we have, it's not residence, it's a, uh, I guess a commercial one, the golf club's water is running into not one property, but a series of properties down there, and I think it, uh, the, the golf course should repair it, and the repair might take two days at the most. It is not a complex, and it's not an expensive repair, and it'll solve the problem.
All right, Commissioner Waters, you have your comments?
Uh, the comments.
Uh, Commissioner Miller?
I agree exactly with what Commissioner King just said.
All right, Commissioner Nalitz?
Uh, I also agree with Commissioner King, I think that, uh, the golf course will know how to do this and still not, uh, impede the, I guess, play at fairway.
Commissioner Martin?
I agree with Commissioner King, uh, my question to Zach is, is Zach, have you reached out to the golf course and see if they're willing to do that?
Yeah, so like, um, back to what I indicated earlier in the comments, uh, they were waiting to see what action the town, uh, was gonna take on this, so, um, I think they haven't provided, uh, any indication one way or another of how they're gonna proceed, uh, they're waiting for the Board of Commissioners to weigh in on it.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, Commissioner Kane, you want additional comment?
We've already done the engineering part of the thought, and that, I'm absolutely convinced, I was up there this morning looking at those elevations and stuff, uh, that, that this is gonna work.
Commissioner Waters?
Yeah, my, my concern with this is, if the town gets involved in digging and putting across their golf course, which they have to have certain parameters for that golf course lane, there's gonna be a problem there, so I, I, I agree with you, Mr. King, that, uh, we should have a golf course to follow through with this as well, yeah.
Because that's the purpose, correct me if I'm wrong, Zach, we don't have an easement, so that pipe is the golf course's responsibility half this time?
Yes, that's correct, yeah, we don't have an easement across the fairway there, and, uh, and even on this, I would, I would not suggest that if we were to consider an easement there, I would not suggest taking control of that pipe, simply because it's put in at a positive, um, grade, which, uh, i- it's gonna need to be dug up and, and put to a negative grade to flow properly, so if, if anything, I would just say, the only thing we would be interested in would be the, uh, grassy swell that, you know, we could actually visually assess, but, um, so it sounds like the direction will be to put this back to the, the golf course and, and encourage them to, um, follow the engineer's plan and, and to construct the grassy swell.
Commissioner King, you have additional comment?
Yeah, additional comments, not on that part that we just discussed, but, uh, once you get to that drop inlet box at the end of the fairway, with, when rain, I observed that water, it really flows well to the river, and it, it never, never gets jammed up. However, the pipe goes right through a ditch, and it's all overgrown for trees, do you know if there's an easement, and this, this would be on the north side of, um, Starhill Drive, you know if there's an easement in that ditch?
Yeah, I believe there is an easement at that location, um, I do think it would...
Okay, then, uh...
Yeah.
I, I think that at some point in time, we ought to look at taking those trees out of there, because what they'll do is, depending on what kind of pipe you got, and if it's reinforced concrete, and I don't think it is, uh, what the, the roots will get so big, it'll compress the, the plastic pipe, and eventually, uh, we'll have a problem flooding in that ditch. So, I, that, that's a, it's from the, it's separate from the motion, but something that we should pay attention to.
Yeah, just a little bit of background from what I heard when I was out there, um, was I think the town had proposed cutting those trees out before, uh, but the adjacent property owners who are separated by those trees were opposed to the trees coming out because that was their buffer between the two properties, but I, I do agree that, you know, I share in the concern that those roots are gonna infiltrate those pipes and cause an obstruction, so...
Okay. Zach, will you get, will you look into that further and, and get back with us on that, please?
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll locate the easement and get the information and, uh, and have that for the board to consider.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything you wanna add?
I, I just got one, uh, request to make, Zach, Zach, would you, uh, email the commissioners with the, the cost that we incurred for Mr. Freshwater's analysis on this?
Yeah, I'll get that information together.
Thank you.
Now, I have the comments, and we did have a motion, uh, to go to option number three, which the town encouraged the golf course to correct the issues with stormwater pipe and this wall of grass as well, per the engineer's specifications, so I'll go ahead, we'll do a vote on that, and I'll start with Commissioner King.
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Waters? Commissioner Martin?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
And Commissioner Nalitz?
Yes.
All right, gentlemen, I believe that was our last item for the evening, so I would love to entertain a motion to adjourn. I have one for... I have a second?
Second.
All right, and I shall do a roll call vote. Uh, Commissioner King?
Yeah, well, are we supposed to do something about that meeting at the...
No, 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 okay, we took care of it.
Yes.
So we have, yes, Commissioner King, Commissioner Martin?
Yes.
Commissioner Nalitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
And Commissioner Waters?
Yes, yes, sir.
All right, so we are adjourned, thanks, everybody who was on, uh, watching this evening, uh, once again, I apologize for the struggles with the communication, we're working on it, I just look forward to today, we can all meet back here in the boardroom. Thank you for your time, ladies and gentlemen, and members of the board.